After we are done with this application, I need to leave right after that. I gotta go and deal with my wife and her knee replacement stuff. Just the way it is. First item on the agenda is the Gaggen subdivision. Let's see, I've seen some emails floating around. I did forward some emails from Oz and also from, let's see, Selma. Yep, you've got that stuff. Geez, we've got two sets of cameras. Wow, isn't that nice? Why are we doing that?
Why, the cameras?
Yeah.
To record the meeting.
Can't you guys work together?
Well, evidently not.
That is really, really wonderful to see in a nice small family. But, you know, I've made my statement on that. I think it's kind of ridiculous, but whatever. Okay, first matter is the Gaggen subdivision. Let's see, like I mentioned, I did forward some emails out and around to people. There were some later emails that occurred. Let me get my tablet up and running here.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I pass the board members their plans?
Sure. Go ahead. Okay, so, there was, no, I don't. There was some questions going around about some drainage issues that Chris and Jay had worked out on. The resolution, last email from Jay that was earlier today, well, late this afternoon, let's see. We have received the, reviewed the materials received on five December 2016 regarding the changes to the plan to be pressed. Stormwater concerns for water flowing towards the, towards and southeast along Clement Road. Based upon the material presented, we would agree that with the designer that there should be no change since the close southeast along Clement Road. That said, care needs to be taken during construction to ensure that the design intent is maintained. If you have any further questions, please call respectfully Jay Stevens. Jay will probably be doing, you know, inspections for the town, so, you know, he'll be enforcing whatever you're saying, making sure that you guys do exactly what you said, so. All right, so, Chris, go ahead. What do you have to say?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I want to take a moment to recap where we started with the application and some things that have transpired in the last 30 days. Some of the discussions that we've had with the most immediate abutter, Oz and Kerry, and then go through any of the outstanding items that the public mentions during the last meeting that the board asked for some clarification on, and then take any input from the public and try and answer any of the board's questions here this evening. So, we submitted an application for a five-lot subdivision which includes three condex units. One of the five proposed lots is the existing Red House out on Clement Road that is to remain, and the remaining four are off of a proposed cul-de-sac which is in, within the 10-acre parcel. At the first meeting, the board took the application, accepted it as complete. We had some general conversation, and we had a review letter from Mr. Krebs which we went through in pretty detailed format and decided which one of those, which ones of those comments was germane, in the board's opinion, germane to this particular project, and we decided how to move forward on those issues. The board then scheduled a site walk and requested that the plan be submitted to Civil Consultants for General Civil Engineering and Material Review. And the board and I met on, which was, I believe it was a Saturday morning, not Sunday morning, and walked the proposed center line of the roadway as well as viewed the individual building lot areas and where the infiltration systems would go within the, within the project. We then came to, at the first meeting, we had discussed whether or not a hammerhead in a narrow roadway was appropriate, and I had a follow-up meeting with the fire chief, or not the fire chief, the representative of the fire department and the Department of Public Works to determine whether or not the roadway should be 18, 20 feet and whether or not a hammerhead should be presented. We had moved ahead with a small design for a hammerhead based on some of the discussions that we had originally with the board. It was determined at the second meeting that the hammerhead was not preferred and that the original proposal for a small cul-de-sac be remained within the plan set. By the second meeting, we had received a full engineering review by Civil Consultants, and we had replied to Civil Consultants at the last meeting, which was in November. We had supplied the board with the correspondence that we had with Mr. Krebs and Jay Stevens from Civil Consultants, and we went through item by, item by item to determine which ones we had addressed and which ones were insufficient, and at that time we felt that all of those items had been addressed. At the second meeting, the, a number of the abutters showed up, a number of members of the neighborhood showed up, and there were a number of questions that came out of that meeting. The first was the housing style and what housing style is proposed within the project. We're proposing a five-lot subdivision at this point. Three of those lots are to have condenses on them. The applicant fully intends to build and sell those, but as we all know, we can't control market variabilities, and he may be forced to rent them at any time in the future, just like any one of you could rent your single-family home at any time. The second was, one of the major concerns that we took out of the meeting was traffic, and it is our understanding that people on Clement Road travel at higher rates of speeds, and there are high volumes of traffic on Clement Road. However, our proposal does not add to that exasperation. The level of service is not diminished on Clement Road by the number of trips that we generate to and from the project throughout the day. The AM peak hour trips are three in and three out. The PM are approximately the same, and the total daily volume is around 45 trips. Forty-five trips equates to half that many vehicles. One of the concerns related to traffic is site distance. We itemized site distance as an item of concern before we even submitted this application to the board, which is why we provided a site distance and a sightline profile for your review as well as civil, general civil review. That has been within the plan set from day one and has, provides the 300 feet of site distance that's required by this board in each of those directions. It would require some vegetation back to the right-of-way line. We have removed to achieve that site distance, and that type of mitigation is proposed within the plan set and has been since the initial application. Walking on Clement Road is apparently dangerous. A few of the people in the neighborhood feel that it is dangerous to walk on Clement Road. That's not something that we can control. We can't control speeds. This is what we consider an enforcement issue, but we would point out that people could walk within our new subdivision safely. It is proposed to be 20 feet wide with the shoulders that are now required by this board and the fire department. Wells and Septics, question came up on the availability of sewage disposal on-site. This issue is handled by the, I'm sorry, the Manhattan Department of Environmental Services, the Subsurface Bureau. We are required to receive a permit prior to starting construction for this project. We have submitted for that permit. It would be pending process at this point, but our sewage loading as well as water withdrawal is within the available loading of the total site, so we don't see a problem receiving that permit. There was some questions during the site walk as well as during the last planning board meeting concerning water withdrawal on this project site and as it relates to the issues that have been recognized at Janco out on, is it Goodwin Road? It's Goodwin Road, I think. I talked to the environmental engineer that is constantly monitoring that site, and it was his assessment that because we are, his, the contamination elevation is at USGS elevation 100, and our project site is at 130 and above, that we are hydraulically up gradient from Janco and therefore should have no issues removing water from the site. We noted that these three wells that were contaminated due to Janco were all downstream or down gradient of the Janco site. The application contains waiver requests, which we would like to discuss with the board this evening. We'll point out that both the planner and Jay Stevens from Civil Consultants agrees with all of the proposed waivers and sees no issue with the board granting those waivers. They're all relatively small engineering items that are variable from site to site and agrees that on these particular, on this particular site that these waivers to those regulations are appropriate. The drainage item that the chairman was discussing had to do with a small existing area that drains out into Clement Road and drains down Clement Road. We had originally had an increase in peak rate of flow at that point, and in speaking with your review engineer, he asked that we refine our analysis to remove that increase, which we were able to do, and as the chairman pointed out, he has now weighed in and agreed that that, that our design is appropriate and is within the tolerances of the drainage analysis as well as the regulations for the town. Some specific design changes that we've made in the last 30 days are in a direct effort to work with the better, the direct southerly abutter Oz and his wife Kerry. And one of them, the chairman brought up during the last meeting, was he and the board felt in general that the buffering that we had originally proposed against that southerly line was lacking, I guess for a better term, and that it should be enhanced. We have on two occasions met with Oz and Kerry to discuss these items. What we are currently proposing within the plan set is a row of white spruce trees to be planted five to six feet tall, 20 feet on center, and then a row of arborvitae's in more sensitive areas to be stacked. The 10-foot on center, those are 20 feet on center, but they're 10 feet from the white spruce trees, also to be planted five to six feet tall to create a double row of screening within that area. We also discussed with them the potential for moving the roadway system, not moving the right-of-way, but moving the roadway within the right-of-way, and we were able to accomplish that by sliding the roadway from about station 125 to about 400. We were able to slide that about 10 feet, which saved obviously 10 feet of disturbance but also saved on some back slope grading, and it allows for a large amount of the brush that's there to remain. There's no reason to remove that. The trees that we're proposing are directly in line with a natural clearing that has taken place along that line, so those trees can be planted without other vegetation being removed. The second meeting that we had with the abutters, we actually went out and looked at the site. We actually took photographs and things of that nature to sort of document on the ground where these improvements would take place and what impact those improvements would have on the sightline into specifically their property from our project site and how that's impacts, how that impacts light, sound, and other nuisances, things of that nature. We then walked down to the project site where the three condenses will be built and reviewed those areas as well. The last item that we discussed with them was the installation of a fence somewhere along this boundary line in an effort to document something on a plan and get it to board, to consultants, and frankly, to them for their first review. I showed a 275-foot linear feet of fence from their rear corner up the line approximately to the top of the hill. My applicant feels as though that that is overreaching in his opinion, and that we have done a number of other things that have cost time, money, and energy to try and offset the impact of the project on those boundary lines. A few examples of those are, we have obviously enhanced the buffer from the original plan submitted, obviously the time spent re-engineering the roadway, the time spent by your review engineers and your planning consultants who re-review the plans, and things of that nature. It's his assessment and the applicant's opinion that the fence along that entire area is not 100% necessary. I understand that the abutters may feel differently. His reaction was to ask for the abutter to pay for 50% of the fence, and I don't believe that the abutter is interested in doing that at this time, but we would be willing and open to the suggestion of smaller fence, of less length of fence, installing a berm of some kind for vegetation replaced on top of that, things of that nature. I think it's incumbent upon the board to determine what they feel is reasonable for both parties in both situations. We are, we would propose that the fence was installed, that it be installed on their property so that it's not within the road, the road right-of-way, so that it's not a continuous maintenance headache for the town, that they own the fence, they'd be able to maintain it and operate it and keep it up moving forward in the future. One of the reasons that our applicant feels as though a fence of that length is a little overreaching in that, you know, where does, where does fencing in a piece of property end? We understand looking and focusing on areas of concern, a specific concern, but we're not interested in wrapping our entire property in a fence, and I don't believe the rural character of the area really demands that other people do the same. So, there again, we would ask that the board weigh in on and review those issues. The applicant is here tonight if you'd like to discuss any of that with him.
Did you all sit?
I believe that that sums it up for now, sir.
Okay. All right, cool. Just one procedural thing. I am going to appoint Mr. Chase. Thank you. He was a very long day at work today. As a voting member tonight, Ms. Miles is not going to join us this evening, so you are a voting member this evening. Sunday, I kind of took a ride out to the site and pulled my truck in there and took a look around and saw the property line, and I still plan to put in. I'm still amazed that you guys cut right up to the property line. That was stupid. That was just not right, and I don't understand why that occurred.
We're talking about the path the machines took to dig test pits on our property.
Yeah, and it's right on the property line.
It was, it was the easiest area to get a large machine down.
You could have gone straight. You could have gone straight down. And, you know, and that's, that's causing a lot of problems that just happened here.
But we're perfectly willing to re-vegetate that. That was part of, a large portion of my presentation.
Quite frankly, you know, the fence is, is going to be part of that. That's a deal breaker for me. I'm just saying that right up front. That's something you're going to have to deal with. You know, why you guys set that up, cut in so badly is, is beyond me. When, when we went on the site walk, you know, we had a clear shot into Oz and Kerry's property. You know, that was stupid. But anyway, I also kind of parked my truck there for a while and looked at site distances. Now, granted, it's a big ass four-by-four, all right, and I'm sitting, I was sitting in there and just watching traffic going by and stuff, and it was a little bit, I'm close to evening and stuff, but the site distances looked fine to me. You know, the, the issue with Clement Road is that it's a pass-through, and it shouldn't be. You know, the, the solution there, and I hope, I hope the residents of that neighborhood take heed of this, is that we need to dead-end that thing at the Summersworth Line. If you wanted to, if you want to fix the problem, that's how you do it. You know, and you're going to start having all the tra, all that traffic going up and down the road. You're going to be able to walk down it. You know, it's, it's just a statement of fact. You know, we, we have a lot of traffic going down a town road when in actuality we should be diverting it onto the state-run, you know, road system, but, you know, that's neither here nor there. The issue as to who owns the fence and stuff, you know, I would agree with the fact that, you know, Oz should own it, and Oz is shaking his head.
It's fair.
It's fair, you know.
I'm not going to ask our neighbors to pay for it.
But we'll, you'll be able to, we're talking a little bit. We will open this thing up to public comment. People will have a chance to look at it. I think that's about all I have to say right now. Members of the board, who wants to question?
I have a question. Mr. Berry, in your plan, you say that on the site distance, 300 feet of site distance are required by the subdivision regulations. Can you show me where that's the case?
It will take me a few minutes if there are other questions.
I believe, Mr., we could have Mr. Stevens.
Well, I guess I'm just looking in the, I mean, I don't know if I have an outdated set of regulations. I'm just looking for to see where that.
It's actually, it was in the road design of the driveway.
While looking for that, so, after the last hearing, there was some discussion about moving the, moving the entrance, that road, Oldenburg Road, to a different location. What came of that?
What came of that was a lot of the same discussion that I had with the board that night, that by moving that roadway, you cause further environmental impacts that you could otherwise avoid by placing a roadway where we have it now, and the Department of Environmental Services, the Wetlands Bureau, would not be inclined to approve those environmental impacts if there were other areas that were more viable outside of jurisdictional limits.
Had there been any attempts to contact the, the board to ask if they would grant the waivers?
I wouldn't be a waiver. It would be a wetland permit, and no, I have not contacted them because we do a large amount of permitting with, within DPS and understand that the first rule of jurisdictional wetland impacts are minimization and avoidance, and so we would not be minimizing and we would not be avoiding by placing a roadway in this area that would directly impact that jurisdictional.
Okay. Any questions? Sean? Any comments?
No. The only comments I have, Chris, are, keep going. It should be there. Go back. It should be there. Can I look at page? This is new. Page five, and there's other details. The entrance plantings, is that going to, is that going to affect, are you concerned about that affecting your site distance? Because they seem to be fairly close to the Clement Road edge of pavement.
No, those are low growth geographers.
How, and how low?
They're just ground covers.
Okay. Fair enough. And is there a reason for putting no parking signs along the road right of way?
Because it's a fire lane, and it's not enforceable to be a fire lane without a sign that dedicates that no parking should take place. So essentially, somebody could park there.
Did someone demand that of you?
Nope, just experience in other communities with other fire chiefs.
The concern that I have is, is, you know, it wants, if it's a big on the town road, the town is maintaining signs that they don't need, I don't think, so my preference would be to not, to get rid of it, but it's a minor, minor issue, so.
Table one, page five of Road Design Construction. Ask the.
Site. What page, Mike?
Five, but it's of, of Road Designs, Construction, Certification, Section, Table one. Depending on traffic. Do they take about 300, 350, or 400 feet?
But our road generates less than 50 trips a day.
From what I can see, from where I'm sitting. Any other questions from the board?
I guess I just follow up on that. So, Mr. Berry, is this a, so I see in my version of the rules, there's H2 and H6. H2 says, quote, "When a proposed driveway is located on a town road, the applicant is responsible for certifying the proper site distance is provided at the location indicated on the plans for all residential driveways located on the lot serving a single-family or duplex lot. The minimum proper all-season site distance shall be 300 feet in all directions," end of quote. So, are you saying that this is a single-family or duplex lot?
No. The table that Mike was referencing is the table you should be looking at.
Okay, well, just want to, if you don't mind, just want to go on to number six. So, H6 says, "For all other driveways, common, commercial, industrial, multifamily, et cetera, the minimum all-season site distance shall be 365 feet in all directions, meeting the requirements for roadway intersections. Proper visibility easements shall be provided to meet the site distance requirements." The applicant is responsible for obtaining a driveway permit from the board selection prior to the issuance of a burling, of a building permit and minimum driveway width for.
This isn't a driveway job.
Okay, so you're saying that, so, all right, so give me from where you're going to, show me where the, where the 300 feet comes from.
Where is it? Where is the table?
Table one, so in Road Design, it's at page five.
Probably right there.
Page five, that section.
Is it table one?
Yes. It says ADT 050, 250, 254. It's the fifth from the bottom.
And ADT, Mr. Berry stands for what?
Average daily trips.
And you're saying the average daily trips is how many?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. All right.
Hearing none, I'm going to open this to public comment. Any comments shall be, please give me a sec. Any comments are to be addressed to the chair, and I will, from there forward, be always answer them from either the board or a planning consultant or the app. The what? And name of the dress. I wish we could add that to the list. So, if you're anxious, go ahead.
Kathy Turgeon, two Turgeons Way, exact same road. Two houses, 200 feet per slot. 11-acre lots, and that's all this board would let us do. How can, and same Civil Consultants, both groups are the same. Why are you letting that one go through?
As I recall, your situation going back ten years ago.
Maybe.
Was, was, was quite different.
You were on it, you were the board there.
Yeah, I was there. I don't think I was there for the final approval.
Approval got, got approved, this town approved it a little bit, weren't I?
Your, your situation was different. You were trying to do it.
Those are eleven acre lots, one house on, the whole eleven acres, and I put in the same road as he wants to put in where a whole bunch of little houses.
Did we have to cluster the board? Develop?
No, nothing. Two houses.
There were, there were zoning changes that did occur between that time and now.
To allow this to go in? Should never have happened.
Guys voted on it.
I don't think so.
Yes, you did. Because there was a zoning change, it went to, it went to the town.
Number of questions? Miss ma'am?
Virginia Bannon, three seventy-five Rollins Road, right across the street from the comment. And I, my comment is that in, in reference to the fencing that they want to put out, it was made noted that the fencing would take away the rural character of, of this community. I think it's already been done, taking away the rural character of the community. I don't think the fence has anything to do with taking away the rural character. I think it's for privacy for the abutters.
It is. Further questions, sir? Yes, sir?
You're the perfect person to address this to. Name and address. Nelson Laurie, three two seven Rollins Road.
Thank you.
Forgive me for not standing. I don't have your, I'm confident that the line of sight is a safe one. The Clement Road comes down from the Norton's to Mary Pat's driveway about southwesterly, and then it turns to the south-southwest, right there on the crest of an old. I've been there at night, and I've been there during the day, in a, in a car and on the ground, and there's still a degree of that being hidden. Now, I'm standing right in front of where the construction road now debouts is onto Clement Road. I still think it's, it's hidden too much with the combination of the crest of the hill and abandoned the road. It's just, I would ask, how was this line of sight, safe line of sight determined? Was it eyeballed? Was that man with a transit did it? How, how was that determined?
First, I want to note that the line of sight is not calculated. Sorry about that. From where the...
You need a hand?
Looks like it. The line of sight is not calculated from where the excavator went into the woods. The line of sight is calculated from where the proposed entrance is, which I testified before this board on the sidewalk, to show members of this board as well as members of the staff, the position of the entrance onto Clement Road is the highest vertical point there is in the crest of that hill, which is here. The entrance into the excavation road is a few feet lower than that. So that's, that's first and foremost. The second is, the line of sight is calculated based on the N H D O T's rule concerning what object they're looking at another object. And as you can see, this is the line of sight profile that we've put together. This is not somebody standing out there and using their eyeballs. This is using the real topographic information that was taken during the survey process to determine where the car would be sitting in the proposed roadway entrance. The rule is looking three point seven five feet tall, looking at three point seven five feet tall, and you draw a line between them and make sure that there's no vertical obstruction. You then look at the horizontal alignment to see if there are any horizontal obstructions. And when we measured it, there were none.
If there's empirical evidence, otherwise, we would have to gather that information.
Chairman, let's.
I'll thank you. Olive Akkus, two eighty-one Clement Road, the famous abutter. First of all, Chris was very helpful. You know, he came in, we met, very civil conversation. At the same time, we have disagreements, two major issues, which will, you know, I will appeal to two different issues. One, the fencing. I would appeal to common decency for that one because we understand fences cost money, like, just like houses, they cost a lot of money. And we bought our first home, and we put everything that we had into this house. And although Chris says, you know, yeah, not everyone has a fence around their property, but not everyone also have road materialized right next to their property, you know, overnight. So the issue around, we are very thankful that they're actually considering moving the road, that helps, especially given the fact that, you should know, we're therapists, my, Carrie and I were therapists, and eventually we'd like to move our therapy offices to, to our barn, which will be renovated. And having, I don't know if you ever been to therapy, you don't have to disclose it, but you don't want to be, you know, you don't, you don't want to see anything. You don't want to see cars or anything like that. So in our, from our perspective, they propose some really reasonable things, which we're really thankful for. But I also look at them as a reasonable thing to propose because I believe, Mr. Gaglin, he's a businessman, he's a pretty savvy businessman. It's America, it's his property, he wants to make money, that's fine. There's a, I'm pretty sure there's a cost benefit analysis that's taking place. But Carrie and I, we don't have a profit margin. We have none. We have a margin of cost. We're right now looking at quite a lot of different things that we're losing property value, we're losing privacy. So in that sense, in the larger scheme of things, I'm gonna appeal to the board and to Mr. Gaglin to really consider what we're saying around how important that privacy is, not only for our family, but also for the people that we'll be serving in the future. So that's one, that's appeal to common decency. Secondly, if the board allowed, Mr. Chairman, if you allow me, I, I think I was able to provide, I can provide some sort of rudimentary maybe evidence of our concerns. And in the name of really, let's look at it logically and scientifically, I would like this to be a really good discussion, that the board understands what we're talking about, our concerns, and if you deem that is not possible, that somehow what we're seeing, and Nelson, we, all our neighbors saw, is not accurate, that's fine.
Yes, sir, how are you planning on presenting that?
I have a video. If I, if I have a projector, can I set it up in two seconds?
Sure.
Thank you.
It'll have to be right over your head, Mr. Chairman. Chris, can I put this over there? I remember that I shut it. Now I better remember how to turn it back on. It's not very perfect, but let me see.
Talk a little bit more.
There you go. So, so I actually have a little cat toy with me to point out as a laser. So this is, can everyone see?
May I down the lights?
Sure.
You can get it by already.
So this is, right now, this is our property, right over here. Right over here, you see there's a flag, you'll see that's actually a hundred and six feet away from the proposed edge of the road. There's one over there, there's around two hundred, and that rock all the way down over here, right next to our neighbor's driveway, that's three hundred feet mark. So, a couple of videos I want to show you. So right there, that's a hundred and six feet because it was right on pavement, a hundred feet mark. And then, so this is where that, Chris, I believe, that's the road and that's where the stop sign is gonna be.
This stake right over here is approximately where the edge of the road apparently is going to be.
Can you kill that audio?
And that stake right over here, where the...
See one of the down or off? Up?
Is probably, approximately where the vehicles are gonna be stopped. And...
There you go. So that's where it is. And then, I'm gonna try to walk in there and show you in this, you know, video. Apparently that's gonna be graded, that area, it's gonna be lower. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris.
There are a number of things I'll correct you in a second.
Okay. So that's where the road is, as you can see, and when you look right, so right here, these trees are gonna be gone, apparently. But so around here, that where the second and third flags are supposed to be. And that kind, that vegetation around here, the background, is, I believe, are in our property, and they're right in the way. And of, from our perspective, then, if we're off, we're off, absolutely, this is just our simple way of trying to show you our concerns. And that is not, that orange thing is not even the first flag. That's a property line, where that is. So the first flag is over here, and the third flag is not visible. Why not, don't forget, I'm actually on the road now, almost on the road. And I think the proposed stopping line, whatever that's called, is gonna be quite, you know, ways back. And here's another video, quickly. This is on back and, you know, we're, so I'm really trying to show that it's almost, the, the third flag is almost invisible. This is, once again, is not the first flag, that's not the hundred, you know, feet mark, that's just a property line. It's, from my, from my perspective, it's, I think that one is, right there, is the two hundred feet mark, right there. And the three hundred feet mark is beyond, underneath that hill, that crest. And just to show you finally, let me see, I walked the distance, so this is how far you need to go. I think this shows it really well. And how far you can see, this is where, this is the three hundred feet mark, and this is our property, and, and that far away one is the hundred and six feet marker. So there, you need to go a hundred and six feet even further, beyond, above, beyond that crest, to be able to get to that proposed road location. So right there. So that's why we have our concerns, and once again, I'm a therapist, Chris is an engineer, what we're asking for is, from my perspective, there is some serious concerns, and if there is a way to validate this independently, we're looking at the board to do that. But if somehow, also John's here, you, you know this kind of stuff too, I believe that's your job too. If that's, you feel like this is good enough, we're fine with that. We just want to make sure that we have a, a proper conversation around this, and every, all evidence is reviewed, and we want to make sure that we talk about it as a town.
So Oz, when you pull onto a, I pull up to a road.
Yeah.
You look as though you are like about ten feet up, is that correct?
Say that again.
You're about ten feet in.
In some of the videos, yeah, around, yes.
All right.
I wouldn't say I'm...
I know that when I drive up to a, to go out onto a roadway, I don't make my go no-go decision at, you know, a line that somebody's set in. I'm going to a point that I feel is safe for me to get that road. Now, now, when I was sitting there a couple of days ago, okay, when I was at the point where I, I would make my go no-go decision, okay, I had a pretty damn good view down, down that stretch, I'm just saying. You know, we have had this independently verified already. That's the reason why we have peer review, that happens. You know, we don't take automatically what the, what, what the project engineer says. You know, we forwarded it off to, this is usually some consultants, Jay Stevens, or Paul Conlon over in Dolph, that will sit down and actually verify these, all these numbers. So that has occurred. You know, I think what you're asking for is a third one. Personally, I think that's a little...
Well, I didn't know that occurred, first of all. I'm sorry if that, that was the case. I guess, I wa, I wanted to make sure that no rocks were, you know, remain unturned. So that's why I just wanted to present.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's the reason why I, I'd let you go ahead and do it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board on this video? Might as well just kind of...
Can I discuss a few lines of...
Let's, I want to see if we have any. So, be as polite as I can.
Please do.
The, where Oz was taking his video looking towards Rollins Road was a few feet further downslope than where the road was gonna go in. And if you remember, when I, when I left the second day, I'm sorry, I won't go dog anymore. When I left the second day, I corrected on the ground where the roadway would be coming out. So where the video was taken from is approximately ten feet further north than where the roadway is gonna be coming out. Secondly, line of sight is taken ten feet off from the traveled lane or edge of pavement. And as you can see, from the sightline profile that we provided, ten feet off that area does not get you beyond the boundary marker that kept pointing out in his, his video. He kept saying, "This orange flag is our boundary marker and not the flag I want you to look at." The perspective from the video was further back. So if you're further back, yes, you're gonna be looking through vegetation that we don't control in that area. But as you sit ten feet off the roadway, looking in the, in the direction, you do meet the site distance. Secondly, when you measure site distance, you measure site distance to the approximate center line of the oncoming traffic, not the opposing traffic. So if you'll notice, the sightline profile is drawn to approximately the, the center line of the oncoming lane, because when you are turning left, left turns are always the concern, when you're turning left, you need to be able to make the, what we call the decision distance, to turn left, the no, no-go type mentality from the oncoming car, not the opposing car. Now, that's not to say that we don't look at the opposing car, and you have to have the same amount of site distance in that direction also, but where the stakes were placed, they were placed in the shoulder and off the edge of the shoulder, which you would not be looking at when you're looking for your oncoming vehicles. So those are, those are, I guess, some inconsistencies on how we measure site distance versus what the...
Okay. All right, further questions? In the back.
Larry Mark, about two eighty, Clement Road. So at what height do you take the sightline? Because you mentioned you had a large truck. Well, that's definitely...
I, I think it's three point, you said three point seven feet, three point seven five.
Three seven point seven feet to the center line is clear for three hundred feet.
That's what the, that's what all the survey data are showing.
But just to clarify, there is, there is greater vegetation that needs to be removed in the Clement Road right away.
Yes.
So can you just point that out for us where that's happening?
This area right at the corner where Oz...
Uh, this area right at the corner where Oz was pointing out the, um, the bounds, uh, the vegetation around that bound, the trees in that area, those would be removed to achieve your statistics.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna disagree that, you know, it's just within the followances, uh, but it does meet the regulations.
That was my next point. It must be awful tight, because even
And I'm not gonna
I live down the flat there, uh, you know, my next daughter's Salmae, and the way people drive there, they make that corner, and a lot of times, I think I got a clear shot. I look the other way, and I turn around, and somebody's right on top of me. And that could be the thing I would think, see happening up there as well.
I'm gonna let Oz go.
Mr. Chairman, um, one more thing. Um, Chris, thank you, you were very polite. Um, one of the things that we've done after the, um, this issue came, um, came up, um, we reached out to Stafford County Planning Commission, and what they said was, here's, here's, here's another level, and I'll leave it up to the board to discuss on this. Another level that we were concerned, and all our neighbors brought up, is the speed, speeding, right? And I like the idea of having a dead end, that'll be awesome. But I think, right now, with that talk, you know, being, the, um, being so tight, this whole thing being so tight, and the speed, when you conflate those two factors, um, is that something that the board has discussed?
I, I did have a discussion with the police chief earlier, about two weeks ago, on, on this exact matter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in order to go below thirty-five, there would have to be a traffic study done by the town, not by a developer, the town would have to do it. And, um, at that point, you know, maybe the speed limit can go down, okay? The town would have to expend, you know, those funds and, I think there's a general, um, hesitation on spending those amounts. That's the reason why, as I said earlier, you folks, you know, the people that live on Clement Road, need to push back on the town.
Well, that's what my
You know, and, and, and I think that there are solutions. I think the solution, I laid out earlier, I've, I've been saying that for a long time, I said it when I was a city councillor in Somersworth, and I actually represented that other side, the, the Somersworth side, at, at the line, that, you know, there were people that were complaining back then about that, that was back in the night, in the eighties. You know, this is anything new, this is, this has been there a long time, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have been concentrating on traffic turning out of the access road, particularly those turning left. But, you know, as Oz's video showed, that the traffic already on Clement Road, and proceeding north towards Somersworth, it looked to me like that was heavily masked, or significantly masked, let me say that, as you're, and if you're, we've been talking about speed, you turn on the Clement Road, you put your foot down on the pedal maybe too much, and you come up from, from Rawlings Road up the hill, and that looks to me like you can't see.
All the empirical evidence that we have from surveys, and everything that we have in front of us, shows, you know, shows that it works. Let's stay in the back.
Just thought I'd ask.
Yep, that's, and, you know, I, I can agree with what you're saying, I, I know I have issues pulling out of my driveway on, on Short Street, trying to get, get out, especially when a car comes off of Route Four, it's going like hell, guess what, I have, I have seconds to, to respond. It's
And they're supposed to
And I know what you're doing, I, I, I know exactly what you guys are doing.
Well, on Short Street, there are all those beautiful flowers, they probably dazzle you, so.
I will pass that on to my wife. All right. Further comments? Yes, ma'am?
So, Elliot Paul, Washington Street, Rawlings Road. I know you just mentioned that bringing the speed limit below thirty, thirty-five would require a traffic study. Was that something that has been put into place in the last couple of years, or has that been a long-term thing?
There was, there was a point in time that the tra, that the speed limit was twenty-five down through there. Then what happened was, there was a couple of people that got ticketed for that, and I think that they took the town's task in court, and that speed limit was, you know, was decided to be, like, illegal. And that in order to, to get around that by state law, you know, we have to do the traffic study.
I'm just
And, and what, we haven't, what, that hasn't happened.
I'm just thinking the village is thirty, and there was discussions when the development was started by Tinberg in, off Colmentler Street, whether Church Street was gonna be thirty, twenty-five, what that was gonna be. So, I'm just trying to make a correlation in my own mind.
Well, it, it, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't live, you know, anywhere near this project, but, you know, one of the things, and, but I do drive down Clement Road all the time, and I may be guilty of going faster than thirty-five, but it may be why, you know, I don't know if the town needs to study this, you know, whether or not a lower posted speed would make any sense, but my sense is that people aren't going the speed limit right now. And if you went thirty-five, there wouldn't be the potential for problems, but I think you're right, it's a, you know, people fly, I think people go pretty fast down on
On the hill?
So, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's as simple as just, you know, increase police
They don't run there.
They are.
Yeah. Maybe not as much as the residents would like to see.
I just don't know, five
And a follow-up to that is, I know, I go to the select board meetings, and I know last, earlier this year, our last ball, um, the police chief had gotten our surveillance unit to observe
Yeah.
Concerns on Bear Road. So, maybe a suggestion is made by the planning board that
I think I've seen that, I've put it in
A surveillance unit, um, and this was, looked like a regular electrical box on a line, so people didn't know it was there, and they caught, they don't know who it was, but they clocked somebody going rather fast down that road, and they found out that most people going down Bear Road were within a reasonable rate of speed. So, maybe something like that should be suggested to the police department.
So noted. Yes, sir?
Hi, Raleigh Genado, phone sixty-one Clement Road. I'll be honest, folks, I haven't looked at a zoning book in thirty years. I think Mr. Aptis is gonna end up having probably ten dwellings within four to five hundred feet of his front door. Is that the intent of the zoning laws in, in, in this town? I'm not sure what the, I don't think the definition of a rural setting is probably part of the zoning
Well, one of the things that we are dealing with here is that this project needs to regulations. As written today, duplexes are allowed in suburban residential zone. You know, we're talking as a board whether or not that, that should be pulled. And I, a couple of weeks ago, we had a fairly spirited discussion on that matter. I think the board was pretty well split, as, as to, you know, whether or not the duplexes should be allowed or not allowed. Like I said, this is, this is all, this is allowed, so.
I'm embarrassed, and I hope I didn't mistakenly wrote that
I, no, thank you. We, we, back a few years ago, when we had the condo development behind the Muller's current, at that point in time, we really scrubbed the ordinances of multifamily. And we purposely did stay away from duplexes, but there's no way in Rawlings with quite a large multifamily development. You can't do it. But, and, and primarily, the major impedience to that is that a unit can only have, you can have only four units in a building. And that really kinda screws up what we're living there, as to having, you know, like a two hundred unit apartment complex coming in, so. You know, we, we have looked at it and, and, you know, looking at it again, so.
How did that get on the agenda? Does, does, does the folks have to do it?
We have a, we're in the middle right now of determining, you know, what we're gonna go to town meeting with, uh, next year, um, you know, potentially, um, you know, there may be a thing about banning duplexes in, in the suburban residential and countryside residential zone. That has to be passed by the board first. Um, you know, it is an active discussion, you know, will it be on the, on the, uh, on the ballot? Uh, I don't know.
So, Raleigh, we'll be the voters.
Myself, myself, I am, myself, I'm opposed, I am opposed to that. I think that you don't want to bend the housing stock that much, but, you know, there are members from the board that feel otherwise.
And just, just so everybody knows, one of the problems that, that, you know, the state of New Hampshire doesn't tell towns how they, how, you know, what they can zone for and zone against, but they do, they have cracked down on towns saying, you have to allow a variety of housing types. Because we don't have sewer, Pat just said, you know, we, we got rid of, you, you really can't do multifamily anymore in Rawlings Road, so that's gone. The biggest concern that I, I think I would have if duplexes were not allowed in the suburban residential is, you know, someone could sue the town and say, how do you allow affordable housing? Because you have to allow, a percentage of your housing stock has to be affordable. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, or, you know, you should, you know, but, you, you know, you got, we, we've gotta allow a variety of housing types. This is one housing type that we allow that, that's, you know, that's more affordable than a, than a traditional single-family home, but it was a surprise to everybody that was allowed in the suburban residential zone. So, um, and I don't know when it happened, I, you know, I, I think it was years ago.
It's been there for
It's been there for a while, so.
Yes, sir?
Actually, yeah, I'm Gary Bannon, three seventy-five Rawlings Road, and I have a question, kind of backflipped at developers. Because the units are allowed is, is, you know, a significant point, but the point whether they should be built as allowed is a question, because you're gonna build a building, and you just mentioned that the gentleman's gonna sell the building. So, if you sell a single-family home at X dollar value, or sell a duplex at X dollar value, there's a profit margin in there, is it more valuable to sell a duplex, more profit in a duplex than a single-family home? I, I would argue that it's an apple and apples kind of thing, like, build a single-family and sell it, if, if, I think the fallback is, well, if I don't sell it, I'll rent the duplexes. Why don't we just think beyond that, say, why don't you just build a nice single-family home and sell it? You're gonna sell it anyway, as a duplex. Why just sell a single-family? You can cut down the total volume, and all these other issues go away. Not all of it, at least the traffic goes down, the number, you know, sewer system goes down, I mean, all the things go down, the wells go down, you take a lot off the table, but the value of the building is X dollars duplex or single-family. So, I would argue that concept
But, but
If you sell to contractors, you gotta give all money than you would for a single-family in the, in the roadcar.
Really, we're really not gonna get into, you know, individual conversations. It's, it, it really comes down to that, we, we can't regulate what somebody's gonna put on property. You know, I, I couldn't, I, I could, somebody could come in and subdivide a, a large parcel into a bunch of, you know, individual lots, and They could put duplexes on there right now. It could be done. We, we don't have the right to sit down and say, no, it's, you know, we're really looking at it, what's the law?
I guess the point with, with that is that, looking at the context of the neighborhood, to go in, in context of the neighborhood.
And that's, and that, that's the reason why we're, you know, we're discussing about pulling, you know, duplexes out of the, out of that zone. But, you know, as it stands right now, they are allowed. Yes, ma'am?
Virginia Bannon, three seventy-five. Um, I happen to work with state climate scientists, and one of my biggest fears is the groundwater. This year, I mean, we've been having, we've down like sixteen feet. We need to look at that. We are putting all these houses on our aquifer and not taking that into consideration. I mean, we've been told by the town not to water, not to use it indiscriminately. What, what kind of impact
We can't regulate that.
Well, no pun
No, no.
Um, I mean, that's
It's, it's just, it's just, you know
You put that many youth, I, I mean, this is gonna be a problem. It's gonna be a problem.
If, if you recall, a, a number of years ago, in Nottingham, there was a lot of plant that wanted to come in, and the town was, you know, they were really pushing back. I think what ended up happening was, it was really the economy went to heck, and they didn't put the plant in. You know, they really, the groundwater is tough to regulate, I think we had that discussion
But the thing is, you've already regulated, you've already told us not to water, we can't wash our car, we can't water our garden, we can't water the, the lawn, but we can put all these units draining out of our well. I, I mean
I'm just, from, from, from a planning perspective.
This, to me, this is a, this is a real concern. If we have another
There could be, there could be control, it's, I mean, we had an issue with a, with a subdivision a couple of years ago, it was, it was a sewer issue, it wasn't a water issue, and the town didn't wanna provide sewer because they didn't think they had that capacity. If this was connected to the municipal water system, that, that would be a real, a discussion that we could have, but we don't have the, you know, like, the quantity of water to service, you know, five more homes, or, or, you know, eight more homes, whatever it is. But in, in, in this case, where it's their private wells, the plan, the town doesn't have any, any regulatory authority at all.
I know, everybody in the community has been really diligent about what, how we use, you know, water, and to have that many houses just come in, it just like, you know, might as well just throw it out the window. Just to let you know, that is
I, I understand, I, I understand, that would be something, you'd have to push that with higher authorities at the state.
Do you know what's gonna happen if, if our wells go dry? I mean
Is that really our problem?
Yeah, our problem, we'll never, we'll never leave the town of Rawlings Road, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you're telling me with the new rules, the way they are,
Mm-hmm.
That I can take those twenty-two acres out back and develop them? Oh, Kathy Lamb, Two Turgeon Way. I can take those twenty-two acres and develop them now?
Talk to Mr. Berry. He'll come, come up with a plan. He'll come up with a plan.
I know, I know. He'll
He is, he is very familiar with, with our regulations, and
But, that's the way it's set up now.
You could, you could probably, depending on if you, I think you, I don't know if you're running into vet land issues.
Uh, there's stuff on the Clement side
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, this right here is outside of our discussion.
Yeah, but I'm just curious, that's the way it is.
If you, if you wanna have that discussion, you should have it, come, come back before the board
I'll tell Red Pips.
In a, in a public, in a, as a preliminary consult, and we'll be more than happy to answer.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna have a closing statement very quick. First of all, thank you so much for listening, and thank you so much for coming and supporting, and also, everyone has concerns, and also, everyone also knows that it seems like if the, um, the rules change, we will go down in history as the last, um, um, neighborhood that would allow, um, duplexes. So, my appeal to all of you is, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think you put it perfectly, um, I really also am appealing to Mr. Gaggen here as well, um, if this goes through, it seems like, and I like to think that I'm averaging intelligence, it seems like you, um, this is, that was well-planned and well-played, and it's going through, it may go through. If that's gonna be the case, while we're asking, what I'm asking, Kerry's not here, and, because those were very tired, um, but to consider the really serious impact that's gonna have in our lives. And when it comes to, um, Chris's suggestions, and I guess, of course, Mr. Gaggen agreed on those, they're great, but from our perspective, not adequate to really compensate for what we're losing. And in the grand scheme of things, we also believe it's not gonna affect the bottom line of the project. So, thank you.
Okay, any further comments? Going once, going twice, going three times, okay, I'm closing a couple of variants at this point in time. Okay, so, the board, we need to talk now. What do we wanna do about the fence? Should it be there, or shouldn't it?
To me, it's your question.
Thank you.
My viewpoint is that he's done, um, efforts with the plantings, staggering up different types of recovery, that, um, I mean, and I'm not trying to be insensitive, but the plans fit the zoning, it hasn't been looked at by many sets of eyes, surveyors, et cetera, engineers, the line of sight, and everything that we have control over, besides the water, but it does fit the plans, and, um, I'm not an immediate butter, so I'm not trying to come across as insensitive. But on the other side of the things, and being American, Mr. Gaggen has a right to, um, to pursue his investment, and, uh, I think he's, he's been a lot of working back and forth on both sides of the board, and also with the, you know, the team's attorney and the, um, the owner. My viewpoint is that My viewpoint is that I wouldn't see the fence, not having a fence as a deal breaker.
My concern is, is that it's going to take a while for all that stuff to go in.
Just to remind the board that, if you look at page three of the plan set, Oz's house is probably fifteen feet higher than the first house, which would be on lot...
Lot forty-three, two.
I don't, I'm not, you don't hire me to give you an opinion on whether or not a fence is required, but I would ask you, or I would, and if you look at the aerial photo on page two of the plan set, you'll see where their house is in relationship, in relation to lot two. Then ask yourself, is the fence going to do anything? I, I don't know, I don't live there. The only thing, the only reassurance that I would have for you is that the, the closest house to you is, is a, it's quite a ways away, and, and, you know, a road may not be the ideal thing next to you, but it's probably better than having a house there. Because there's not going to be a whole lot of vehicle, you know, trips on that road. But again, again, I don't know if the fence is going to help or not.
I guess my, my concern is, John, is having walk the site.
You know better than us.
Yeah, that, you know, does, does there need to be a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot, you know, fence? No. Okay, I, I don't think that you need to run a fence along the entire property line. I think that as long as the property is screened, you know, maybe about a hundred-and-fifteen or so, that would, would take care of it.
Chris, can you point out on page three of the plan set, where the fence starts to stop?
Well, I think that's the...
It's hard to see.
Yeah, that's the difference. Well, it's, I guess, John, it's not really shown.
Seven, maybe?
It's actually five, yeah, five.
I just can't see, it's hard to discern where the start and stop points are.
It starts at the rear boundary, and we had preliminarily discussed it coming up the slope. And what Mr. Gaggen would like is to reduce that so that it didn't come all the way up the slope. And what we had, Mr. Gaggen had asked if Oz and Kerry would be interested in paying for half the fence, and they said, no, thank you. And so I asked Mr. Gaggen, then, doing a little inverse math, would you be willing to install half the fence? And so what, I might recommend, if the board is inclined to have us move ahead with a fence, that...
Can you go to, can you go to page, page two?
Yep.
So we can understand what I'm going to go. No, page, I'm sorry, page three.
Okay.
Page three.
So...
So there's the boundary.
So there's the boundary. And their barn is approximately here, that's why I showed the aerial. And then their house kind of sits kitty-corner and views out in that general direction. And so what I would suggest is if the board is inclined to move ahead of the fence, we would like the length to be approximately a hundred-and-forty feet, which is half. And it would start here and move in this direction so that it would at least block the area most sensitive to them. That it be on their property, so that they could own it and maintain it. And that it be a six-foot fence on top of a one-foot berm, so you get seven feet of height out of it. And that really the only thing that the two of them would have to agree on prior to construction would be the, you know, general style of the fence, whether it's round posts or square posts, that Oz and Kerry be notified when the fence go in, of course. And that we be allowed to enter their property to install the fence, because that's obviously...
It would be a solid fence for us.
Solid, solid.
Thoughts from the board? What's the growth rate of those trees?
Unfortunately, I don't have an, an exact answer for you. We chose the species and the size and staggering of those so that they were close together upon planting. So a six-foot tall white spruce is about four-to-five feet around. And when you stagger those every twenty feet and put the same size or similar size arbor vidi, arbor vidi, as Jim Schulte commonly called them, between them, that there's little gap between them. They are planted, again, at five to six feet tall, we're not planting three footers, and hope they grow in twenty years, we're planting a good-sized tree. They're actually going to be ahead of the fence, and the fence will actually be taller than the vegetation. But the idea is that, over the course of the next few years, that they grow up and they reduce dust and sound, things like that.
It'll take about fifteen years.
Yes, I'm glad.
No.
John, I'm looking for opinions for each of you.
Well, I see, I see the possibility of a half of the fence in, in the area that is the view area from the, from the back of the house, in the barn, with the buffer that you put in at the ten feet and then the vegetation. I think that's a reasonable compromise. It, it may not be the best compromise, but it may, you know, cause Oz to say that he would then prefer to pay half the fence and pick it up.
John, I think that over time, a fence is less visually desirable than vegetation growing back. So I think I'm not, I think, you know, initially, there'll be some unfortunate light pollution, but I think I'm, I'm against the idea of a fence, I just think that visually, long-term, it's not as attractive as vegetation growing up.
Well, what I, what I think is going to happen over time, ten years, ten years out past that, where vegetation grows and a fence is going to disappear.
But that's, but the way that, I think they've agreed to put it on Oz's land.
And Oz will probably make a decision.
If in five years, he doesn't want to take it.
It's better than looking at cars. And it's better than cars, kids running, our kids running into that road.
Yeah.
Can I just say one thing? I know it's closed.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I wish, Kevin, if you were to come and see, I understand it is America, but also, America, we also take care of each other. I wish you could see what it does to our backyard, and what it will do to our property value. So if it's every man for himself, you know, it's a remarkable thing that we survived for two-hundred-and-something years then. I think at some point, we took care of each other. I would like to think that. But also, in terms of the length, that barely meets the backyard. I'm once again profoundly baffled by, is this going to be so much cost prohibitive to this project that it will be adding another fifty or a hundred feet? Is, is that difficult? That would be my last closing comment.
What I'm looking at, Kevin, is, you know, having gone on the side walk and seeing where that road was just cut right through the property line. And that's really what I'm looking to have covered on. And, and I appreciate, you know, some of the comments and some of the others have made, that, you know, do we want a, a fence going all the way up the property line? Yeah, that's the question. No. You know, but I, I don't think that fits in, fits in with the neighborhood. So that's partly the reason why I'm saying, you know, go to, you know, a hundred and fifty feet so far.
Goodwill and everything aside, and I'm not trying to be any here, but specifically, what is required by our regulations for Mr. Gaggen to put in there? That's my point. And you can push and push and push and ask for more, and believe me, I mean, if, I would be right there if that was the case. I'm just looking at the other side and some of the big pictures. Yes, and John brings up a valid point of, of, you know, aesthetics as well, but beyond that, you know, the developers agreed to two different types of alternating plants, and we, and then we went a step further and made mention of perhaps a fence. And it seems as though there's a little bit of pushback on that. And goodwill and everything aside, and I don't know the man very well, and I need to, but I just, I have wonders if there's a tipping point where, being human as we all are, saying, you know, I've given, and I've given, and I've given, enough is enough, I'm not doing anything because I don't have to.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? You let Oz speak, I know it's just a really good... I'm the owner, I'm the guy, I'm Claude Gaggen, one eighty-eight Blackwater, over somewhere. We just spent another entire month, probably a couple, two thousand, maybe three thousand dollars, on trying to come up with a redesign. We actually, his time is put onto paper, trying to make it more, for everybody in the area, and we just couldn't get it done that way. I mean, Mr. Claude will attest to that. So that cost me another three thousand dollars, they're trying to help the situation out. I think we've done everything in our good faith, you know, trying to make Mr. Oz and everything up there perfect for him. Now, you keep mentioning cutting up the line. Wasn't our intention to do that. It was such an overgrown area, we're trying to weed our way down through there, next thing you know, we found our way up to the property line. Wasn't in our intention. I've been building in the area for years. I'm a local guy, I've been part of this community, Rawlsburg, some of your suburb, my entire life. Your building inspector, I've dealt with him on many, on many occasions, whether it's the Dover, Rawlsburg, I work well with my neighbors. I make everybody happy, I'm the most given guy you ever going to see. I just don't like being forced into doing something. I can guarantee you this, when I get into this project, and Oz comes up to me and says, hey, can we, can you, hey, we found some rocks, and you help me decorate my yard a little bit, we're going to be the first ones over there to help the man.
I'll be calling your Claude.
Absolutely.
Let, let's keep the conversations at room.
But that's not my just point. We just spent thousands and thousands of dollars again, trying to make it good for everybody. And Oz will put in a hundred-and-fifty-foot fence if that's what it takes, if that's what you guys see. But, you know, to keep asking for more and more, it's getting a little, and it is cost prohibitive. These roads don't cost...
I understand, and that's, I'm trying to get this, this to a point of a decision point this evening.
Yes, sir.
So, pleasure of the board, what do we want to do with this? John, do we have any type of motions to, well, approve, or deny?
If you're, if you're, if you're inclined to approve the project, I have a list of conditions that I can read through.
Okay.
But I, I want to, I did want to ask, you know, one of the, one of the problems, I think, Chris, you need to sort of talk to the board. I believe that there's an effort by Claude to sell the existing house this month.
Correct.
So I'm going to read my, in order to make that, in order for that to happen, this plan, or some plan, needs to be recorded so we can peel it off.
Yes.
So one of the things we need to think about is, when I'm reading conditions, I, a lot of these things I want before things are recorded, before, it might make it easier to have Chris prepare a plan showing this lot coming off, you know, while these other issues aren't being resolved. But let me, let me, so just keep that in mind. So the conditions that I have are as follows, and I'll give this to Sarah, so you know, it's hyped up, you can read my chicken scratch. The first one is a certificate of my invitation, prior to the issuance of any building permits, has to be provided, and a note should be added to the recordable plan stating so. So all, every single bound on here. But that would come if the issuance of a building permit, because you're not going to, obviously, monument this unless it's being built. Two, surety to guarantee a hundred percent of the cost of the road, drainage and utility costs has to be in place for the board to selectmen prior to start, or prior to construction. However they do it, I don't know how the board is going to do it, does it. Three, add a note to the recordable plan stating that landscaping depicted within the Oldenburg Lane right-of-way is integral for the approval, and any trees that die shall be reasonably replaced. Furthermore, a separate performance guarantee shall be provided to the town to cover a hundred percent of the proposed costs of planting and labor, plantings of labor, and it shall remain in place for two full-growing seasons after the installation. And the reason I say that, just because it's so important to have these things prepared, you know, as a last. For the final approval...
When does that boundary be in place? Prior to the first CO?
I guess that's between you and the board's... Well, I don't know.
And I just chose, I just think there should be a trigger point.
That would be fine. Prior to issuance of first CO. I'm actually, the later the better, because that way we get two growing seasons out of it. Number four, final approval of the town engineer prior to recording of the plans, I don't know, maybe we need to say, there needs to be a trigger point. I'll leave it at that for now. Five, payment of all fees, which is, I think at this point, is only the town engineer's review prior to recording the plans. Six, all state permits shall be in place prior to construction. Seven, all, we haven't granted the waivers yet, but we need to grant them. All granted waivers shall be added to the plans. And number eight, I, and this is, you know, I don't know what we're going to say about this, a one-hundred-and-forty feet of six foot...
Let's, let's leave that out right now.
Okay.
Let's, and what we'll do if we come in with an amendment to manual...
And then the, then the other two things I'd like to ask for is that, that, well, the only other thing, to remove the no parking signs over in the, in the right-of-way. I mean, if the planning board approves it without them, I, I...
They're not hurting my feelings.
Okay, well, then I'd rather have it gone, because I don't think the town wants to be replacing those every time they fall down.
If they don't want to.
And that's it.
So, does anyone want to make that into a...
But we need to grant the waivers first.
Okay, that's right.
And Chris, do you have a list of them?
I do, and I, I had provided that to the board last month.
Do you still have any?
I have my copy.
Oh, we can use that.
Okay. So if you, if you'd like, I'll leave the waiver requests, and I'll give this to you. If there are justifications for the waiver requests, I'll leave that out of my discussion at the moment. And then just to reiterate, the municipal review engineer has agreed that these are waivers that they should support and so. So the first is ten dot two dot K, which is high-intensity soils mapping. We did high-intensity soils mapping in the wetland areas, and used NRCF soil mapping for the rest of this. That's common practice, and because these lots were not determined by size by soil type, the HISMAP sees a little surplus. The well radius, the well radii extending off the lot, NHDES allows us to extend the well radii off the lot ten feet, which we're proposing in this particular subdivision. Actually, in most instances, it's less than ten feet, but I know that that's what the state regulation is. And Jay Stevens also notes that that's an acceptable practice. A two percent road grade within fifty feet of the entrance, A dot two R, Table One, that has to do with my proposed profile on the entrance of the roadway. And Jay notes that for this particular roadway to require two percent platform for fifty feet would require more alteration to train, more cutting, more land disturbance, and that the alternative proposed is acceptable. Boundary line and curve radii, we only control square boundary points at the roadway, and radii are not required in that instance, and we are providing plans that allow for the construction of the roadway without the radii. The pavement will have the proper radius, boundary lines do. Subdivision lighting, it was actually specifically requested by this board that the lights be removed from the plans due to longevity and cost considerations. Side slopes, your regulations require a four-to-one filled side slope or cut slope. We're proposing three-to-one, which is a common engineering practice. In some instances, we're proposing two-to-one. And again, Jay notes that we're proposing the proper sediment erosion control on those steeper slopes where they're justified. And lastly, your subdivision regulations require that guardrail be W-beam highway, I call it K-rail... I call it K rail, um, and we're proposing a, a wood, wood rail instead of a W B rail. And so the A dot two dot P is a request for the guard rail style. And as Jay notes in his analysis, this meets the purpose, an engineering standard for the road design guide. And then lastly, we have one proposed culvert on site, um, that the regulations require it to be three feet deep to the top of pipe. We're proposing that it's two point eight feet to the top of pipe. The typical bury depth is two feet, so your regulations overreach typical engineering practice. And to drop the pipe further would require that the treatment swale, uh, which is proposed to be a bio retention treatment swale, uh, be lowered into the groundwater table where we're actually trying to recharge stormwater at that point. So, um, Jay felt that the small reduction was worth the positive environmental benefit.
Okay. Do we want to handle the waivers individually or is it one, that's a one motion? Okay. Okay. Waiver to, um, to H I S S mapping will be required to section ten two K. Grant waiver? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Let's see, identification of waiver request, uh, well radii to remain on proposed lots, uh, ten, nine, three feet. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, let's see. Identification, two percent, uh, road grade within fifty feet of the entrance, A two R, table one. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Yeah, go ahead, I'll go.
Mr. President, what are the advantages of requirements? If you look at page five, five, you see the entrance? If it was, if it met our regulations, the cut into the side slope would be more significant.
Can I, John, do you mind if I explain?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so, uh, your regulation states that this line be two percent within the full fifty feet of the entrance. What I've done is the original design tangent is fifty feet and then I went into a four point five percent grade. I add a vertical curve in between them that flattens the algebraic difference out. And that's what, that's the minor difference. Otherwise, I would have to have two percent all the way back to here and then a vertical curve and then, and so it would be even more.
Just by the way, Mike, this is the, this is the ground as it exists today. So if, I mean, I'm just gonna, if he was to draw that sag in there to, to get the, you know, the two percent, you're gonna have to cut more of this, display the side slopes out even more. It had, you know, like.
It would probably really destroy the entrance.
Right, right.
Okay. We're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. All taken a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. And boundary line curve radii, section eight two S three. Motion.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, let's see, next waiver is on subdivision lighting, A two zero, or O. Identification, uh, let's see, subdivision lighting.
Lighting?
Lighting. This is one where we pull the lighting from something. We did one, one, so, okay, so I need a motion?
Accepted.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. And then let's see, two more. Uh, identi, uh, side slopes that exceed four dot one within subdivision A two L.
Motion. Second.
All those, uh, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed? The ayes have it. Waiver regarding guard rail style, A two P.
Second.
All those in favor, uh, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. So those are the, those are the waivers and I will give, oh, wait, there's one other. There is one more. And it's the culvert depth.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for the consideration. Okay. All right, so the next matter is John's.
I just wanted to add, I wanted to add one more, then I think, you know, I don't know if you want to talk to the applicant about this recording issue, but the last one is that Jay Stephen, your, your consulting engineer, has a problem with the road not being in the center of the right of way. So I think we should just add a condition saying the board approves the road not being in the center. I mean, fairness to the voters that don't, you know, don't want the road close to them, I, I think it's the least we can do. And I don't, we have, we're protected by a big easily, so I don't think it affects the town at all. Uh, but I think that should be added, and I did, and I wrote the doubtless condition number ten. And then Chris, I don't know what to do about this recording.
Well, I'm not, I didn't hear any of those that would prohibit it recording.
Okay, that's fine. As long as you're comfortable, then that's how I really handle it. Do you want, do you want this, Sarah?
Yes.
If you can't read it, then.
Do we want to read it back off the board, so?
Uh, you better let me do it.
You just want, want it read off one more time.
Okay, I can go quick. So number one, certificate, a certificate of monumentation has to be issued prior to the issuance of any building permits and a note should be added to the recordable plans stating so. And I don't know what the recordable plans are, but I think there's two in the set. Number two, surety to guarantee one hundred percent of the cost of all road drainage and utility costs shall be in place with the board selectmen prior to construction. Three, add a note stating that the landscaping depicted within the Oldenburg left lane right of way is integral to the approval and that any trees that die shall be reasonably replaced. Further, a separate performance guarantee shall be provided to the town to cover one hundred percent of the proposed costs of the planning and labor of the trees and shall be in place for two growing seasons after the initial installation. And this shall be, uh, in place prior to the issuance of the first substantive offensive. Number four, final approval of the town engineer prior to recording of the plans. Number five, payment of all fees, which I think is only the town engineer's review prior to recording. So you will need to get on Jay to get him a bill because they're slow. Uh, six, all state permits shall be in place prior to construction. Number seven, all the granted waivers should be added to the recordable plans. Number eight, the fence, no?
Let's.
Okay, I'll leave that one out for now.
Yeah, leave that out for now.
Number nine, removal of no parking signs within the right of way. Number ten, the board approves the right of way, I'm sorry, the road not being centered in the right of way. And I, I guess I skipped over to number eight until we, which is the best.
A motion to accept the conditions of approval as, as, well, how do I want to do this? I want to accept that as a motion. Then, once that happens, I want to move to make an amendment for a vote on the fence. So how do we need to?
So I'm looking for a motion to accept the conditions as prescribed by Mr. Krebs.
Yeah. Yeah. So move, okay, I'll look for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stevens. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. Entertain, make an amendment, you want me to? That a fence be run.
You want me to just tell you, let me show you what I have. One hundred and forty feet of six feet, of six foot fence shall be installed along the property line of lot one, map one, lot forty two, which shall be installed prior to commencement of construction on the property owned by, just call Oz, Oz Infernal.
Okay, that the fence be of solid construction.
I'll say solid fence.
That'll be on.
It's on their property.
On their property.
Yeah, it's on, it's on one forty two.
Right, and that they are, that the, that they are expect, accepting responsibilities for maintenance of that fence.
Okay, now also have the cost shall be borne by the applicant. Maintenance shall be, uh, the responsibility of the owner.
The applicant has approval to enter.
Well, they'll have to work that out, yeah. And I should start a construction because I think they want that up before. I think once we get the road in, back to down there, then we determine exactly what we want to. You've had some. Yeah, that's an email, I like. You want it for closer, towards the house or?
So you're gonna make that as a motion? Second. Okay, so are we clear on the motion? I'm gonna ask for a, raise, uh, raise, uh, a pile of hands. All those in favor signify. All those opposed? Okay, we're two two, the chair votes in favor. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the subdivision proposal as amended. This is the, this is the final vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Those abstained?
Oh, no, I'm not, I'll say no, I'm not abstaining. I, I still have questions on the sideline. So I don't think I have to abstain. I don't think I understand these people.
Two one. Motion, Mr. Stevens. That's it?
Oh, right.
Thank you so much.
Have a good Christmas.
Thanks so much for coming.
Well, something like to happen.
Okay, so why don't we, we get together, get on Thursday.
May I have a drink?
Oh, we can do it. Try to do that.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Okay, um, folks, if I could ask you to continue your conversation, I have a problem in the hallway. All right, um, I didn't sign my meeting for this one. So, um, so what, so what do we want to do about zone? Actually, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm back though. No, that's what I was saying. Okay. Not, ah, no, 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 I, I.
I can bring it up. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be working, all right.
We don't delete them.
I might get back to you tomorrow. Just like to have.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
So I got a email and he says, hi, Pat, sorry, I never made it to that meeting. Is there another one, another one I should attend? I'm considering mixed use business and residential over there, so hopefully the changes are going in that direction. Sorry to hear that. But.
Leave it like a lot.
So, so, that's from the owner, yeah. So are we, what do we have to have our stuff in place?
Are you S P two?
Yeah.
And I think middle is middle and a J, so you don't have a whole lot.
Right, okay. So we would have to make, make decisions in, we would need, we, I, I'm gonna be, it's gonna be really, really tough for me to come to a meeting in a second.
An additional meeting?
Yeah.
An additional meeting?
Yeah. Okay, that's fine, that's cool, that's cool. Okay, then, it's gonna be January, um, I think we, I think we're January sixth and we're gonna have a public hearing ten days later, so.
Have our doctor in our room that night. Congratulations that night. And have, we've seen everything else.
But what are we talking about?
Duplexes?
Well, no, I know, that's an easy one, it's, you know.
Residential in the.
But, but we, we haven't talked, I mean, we, we talked about residential mills, but we haven't, we don't have anything written up.
No, we don't.
I mean, the, here, the issue I have, I mean, we come to a meeting early, the first we get to engineering, you say, let's go, you know, it's gonna, we gotta, we gotta have something to post.
It's unrealistic.
I think it is.
Okay.
I mean, I think that, and I, and I'm, and I'm sad because I think it's something we've all been waiting for for years, but I, I just don't know if it's realistic. I mean, I guess if you have the calendar from the L G C or the N H M A, if you could get us the dates, the zoning dates, um, I, I think we're pushing, it might be too hard. The duplexes is a, you know.
Yeah.
Two seconds.
Some change if you want.
Yeah.
This is a minor, weren't they?
Minor, yeah.
I think, I think, Dr. Wright, I think we're, and I'm sad because we did our, our, our test case really.
Yeah.
I want us to succeed. But I.
Well, really, I.
I mean, it can be, it could be, it could be a keystroke where you just, you know, you, you say it's, it's allowed, but we don't have any, there's no density, there's no, there's nothing.
Well, what I was thinking was that we limited based off the number of floors or that, you know, no more than fifty percent of the unit building can be, you know, building square foot can be applied as. Well, the mill, we kind of, what did we say? We say that only the lower mill?
Well, we, well, at one time, we, Jesus, going back, I mean, Ken might remember, it's going back a year or so, but I thought we talked about only residential, the upper floors.
Yeah.
Bedroom count limitations, I thought.
I, no, I think they scrubbed that because I, I don't, I don't, I think our, well, I think our, our, because I had gotten a bunch of information from Eric Schinberg and, you know, he said even in those three bedroom units, if someone ever has a kid, they move right out because they don't want to raise a kid in the mill. So I don't, we did talk about that, but whether or not it's that important, because I think the original idea was that if you're in the bedrooms, you're not gonna, you're not gonna encourage kids, but I think that it's probably self-regulating.
Probably the kids that it can.
The other thing that we might want to say is this, this is only, you know, these only existing buildings can be converted. So it wouldn't, not that anybody would ever build a new building, but at least it would eliminate that from being a real possibility.
We can, we can limit, we've got minimum square footage of each unit. Now, it's not a number of bedrooms, but.
You could, I don't, I mean.
Well, I think what you do is you carry over what we did for the couple mills. Well, I think, what you do is you carry over what we did for the couple mill to this mill, and that's the.
I mean, we could just, that's what you could just expand it.
Yeah.
The other thing was, could we just redraw the line? No? I mean, that's not easy.
That would be a spawn zone.
Because it's not connected, it's not connected to.
No. What's if you did that, you'd have to include. The only thing I think of carving, yeah. Would be to, to go up, to go off one side of Main Street.
No, okay, I didn't, no.
Snake around.
No, that'd be stupid. Okay, okay. I just have concerns moving people, to be honest, I have to make this in this, leaving large loophole that somebody finds that we don't. Let's make it so.
Conversation, you know, on the second. Yeah, what we have.
Is there current tenants in the, in that building?
In what?
In the Blue Mill?
No.
But some came, some came over with sale, but.
I think they're gone. I think that's the whole.
There was a deal with it.
Yeah. They were there for a while. Yeah. And he was, the owner was happy about that. In fact, Blue was there for, still for a while, even after the building sold, they aren't ready to open it over yet.
Okay, all right. Well, then, if you're gonna have homework, I mean, you ought to think about the duplex issue, because, you know.
I'm.
Sure, you know, you know, I mean, it's, it wasn't very popular thing tonight, so.
Yeah, yeah, but still there's.
No, I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, you know, it's.
I don't want to limit it in the entire town. I think there are places where they, they make sense. Do they make sense where they're approved? I mean.
But if you're acting, if you're acting in public opinion, you're gonna get public opinion from wherever is the, we do allow.
I agree with that.
So it doesn't matter, you know, if you're reacting to public opinion, I just, you know, it's.
Well, I mean, well, the janitor is, he's not in the butter. I don't think so at all, right? So, I mean, that's just one person. Yeah. Anyway, all right, so we will meet on the sixth. I don't see anything coming up to that meeting, so.
Municipal.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Municipal association.
Calendar.
Okay.
Choice one.
I don't see anything in there. That office is all screwed up right now, a little bit funny, so.
Minutes?
Minutes, did we have minutes?
I read the most of these.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, if I want to make a motion to accept them. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it? All right, motion to adjourn? Was there anything else that needs to come up? Okay. All those in favor or seconded by?
They did second.
Second, yeah.
I mean.
All right. Go deal with that.